Welcome to July 1st, 2019, regular city council meeting. Meeting is called to order. Everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone please remain standing. Let the pastor, Pastor Wimby, just come give us a prayer.
Father God, we come to you today and we just say thank you for allowing us to see a new day. Father God, I ask that you would be with us all here at this meeting today, Lord. I pray that you would be with the council, be with the mayor, Lord, be with everyone that's in attendance, Lord, as they conduct the business for our city, Lord. We love you and we truly thank you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Let's get a moment of silence. Please remain standing. We'd like to give a moment of silence for the family that lost their lives on Wicking and the other men in that killing squad. Jerome Cooper, Awita Watkins, and Aaron Watkins. Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Here.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Here.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven tonight, and we do have a corner.
Did everybody get a chance to look at the agenda? Do we need to add anything? We already made one change. Item C has been crossed off and we replaced it with a budget item, which is our amendment. Budget amendment number two. It was item C now. Do we need to add anything else? Also, we make an adjustment under item D. It says three structures, it's going to be two. The two addresses in the items, 4500 Inster Road and 4360 Hickory Street. Anything else we need to add or change? Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the agenda as with the added changes, board, and deletions.
Okay. All right. It's been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Presentations. Adopta Park, Abe Hatchet, and Rob Cato. We really want, it's not really a presentation. We just wanted to recognize, have them come up to the podium so everybody can see them. Abe Hatchet and Rob Cato. I was talking to them last week, come on up. I was talking to them last week about what we want to do with Lamone Park and Westwood Park. Create football fields for our two football youth teams. And then they volunteered, because you know, obviously the city is strapped, but we're going to try to find a way to do it. They volunteered to donate $10,000 to renovate both, to create football fields in both of those parks for our football team. So we're going to make sure we put something up in their names at both fields to let everybody know that they sponsored the fields. So we just appreciate you. This is what a good community partner looks like. This is our backyard, Parks and Rec director. So we appreciate both of you gentlemen. These are business people in our community, reinvesting in our community.
Before they go, you should let them know that they invested in the Memorial Day parade.
And the Summer Fest. I think they donated, was it 20? I think they donated $20,000 to the Summer Fest.
All right.
That's a big deal. Okay. Presentation number two, young lady's not here?
Nope, she didn't show up, but I can still.
Yeah, let's acknowledge her.
You all know what it is. Do I have to go all the way down there?
No.
Can I just speak into the mic?
There you go.
Speaking into the mic now. I am here as the coordinator for ICANN. Most of you know what ICANN is. It's the Inster Citizen Action Network. We were established back in 2010 to combat the water crisis the city faced. We, through the efforts of our attorney, who shall remain nameless, and we got each resident who had a water bill, a $303.78 credit. And after that time, we went into doing things that helped the community. One of the things we did this year, there was supposed to be a young lady here who was the first recipient or graduate from our SIP program, and that's the Student Incentive Program, the ICANN Student Incentive Program. This is where we give out backpacks, but we don't just give you a backpack and let you go. What we do is give you a backpack, and your parent and you sign a contract with ICANN where grades are concerned. And we will pay you for grades, we will pay you for comportment, we will pay you for citizenship at the end of the year. I think it's a couple of dollars for As, a dollar for Bs, and stuff like that. But not only do we do this, it's through the school year, we follow this child, we mentor this child. I went, the young lady who is our first recipient, went to Thorn Elementary School. I went to a couple of student teachers, parent teachers conferences. You follow their work. If they're in need of assistance, such as a, say, they need a uniform, we'll buy the uniform. Say they need a tutor, we'll find a tutor. So these were the things we do. We follow you through the school year. Some of our members, such as Councilwoman Mitchell, will be getting a child next year from Daley. We will be going, Dolores Sabree, I'm looking for Hanif, because I saw him out there, she will be getting one from Daley Schools. We just take a child, but we only do this to about 10 kids a year because we want to make sure we're following their progress. Just giving them a backpack is not enough, because there's no telling how that's going to impact them, other than you got a backpack. So this is what we do. We follow the child through the school year and we make sure they're supported. Now, Melina Hamlet was our first recipient, and we have her certificate here, and there was money to be given to her. But she were, they were supposed to be here tonight, and I don't see them, but I wanted you all to know what the SIP program was about, in case you'd care to join. We're always looking for people to mentor, or monitor, or help these children through the school year. So if anyone's interested, just join ICANN, become part of the solution. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Consent agenda. Everybody looked at the minutes from last meeting? We need to change, any corrections?
Move the acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meeting.
Support. And properly move and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Okay. Boards and commissions?
Yes, I have, I would like to nominate Dorsey Williams to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. Support. We already have his stuff?
Yes. He's on another.
Okay. It's been properly moved, supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Any other nominations? And we need to replenish the DDA and the Tifa board, so we need to start thinking about some, we can't, we've got to have somebody that's state law.
Right.
So, well, we need to start thinking about who would be good to serve on those boards.
You know, a lot of times I think, excuse me, to the chair, I think a lot of times it would be good if people from those different boards explained exactly what is expected of these people. We might get more of a, if they knew what was expected of them, or what this group actually does, other than meet every whatever.
Right. That's true. That probably makes sense. I won't put anybody on the spot, but I'm, you know.
Well, I can give a general blurb.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, we do need people to join the DDA. DDA stands for Downtown Development Authority. And what that authority is supposed to do is to make sure that the downtown is developed, stays developed, is sustained, is attractive, and is keeping up with the trends. We come together to meet, but we also do a lot of research. We are educated by going to conferences and meetings, and we also have presenters come in to share what is happening in other cities. It's not a stressful job, but it is an exciting one. If you'd like to come to the next DDA meeting, which is the third Tuesday in July, you will see that we have a number of things on the table that we are planning to implement in the city. First, we have to generate interest in our city, and that is by doing some things, and we don't have any money, honestly, but there's money out there, and we're going to go get some, but we have to generate interest in our city by doing some little small things that you, that don't necessarily have to cost a lot of money. But we are responsible for making sure that the downtown district is well-kept and well-used.
Can we do Tifa?
Tifa two. Tifa two.
I guess one has, you have to be on one, be on the other, right?
Right. So you're on both. But they work hand-in-hand with funding and all the other work that goes with it.
Where do we get the information for entrance and how to sign up?
Clerk's office.
Clerk's office.
It's a short, one-page application, just basic information. I think they asked a little experience about, something about your background.
A resume, a brief resume.
A brief resume, yeah.
A letter of.
Letter of interest.
Interest. And any citizen is, you know, if you care about the city, you don't have to have a degree to sit on the DDA. You just need to be interested in making sure we look good.
Yeah. Okay. Any other nominations?
Can I ask a question right quick, just about Tifa? Are we still collecting through Tifa? Are we?
I've been told no.
So the answer is, is yes, but with an explanation, so. Because the city's property values are not above a certain point, the capture that's being done is not high enough for money to go to the captured districts, such as DDA and Tifa. If you recall, there are some bonds that are outstanding, where the city's having to take money out of the general fund to cover the debt service. That's doing part to the captures from Tifa not being sufficient enough to cover the debt service. So currently, there's not enough revenue from that, even though they are capturing some. There's not enough to go, you know, to the fund. They don't even have enough to cover their debt service currently, because the city's general fund's having to cover part of that.
But what is being collected is going to the debt service?
Is going to the debt service, correct.
And let me say this too, about our Economic Development Corporation. That is a board of directors, and I'm looking at the list now, and most of the people who are on that list, they're, have expired dates, 16, 17. This is a place where you can find grant money, and in particular, so we really need to pay attention to the Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors too, because as I said earlier, there's plenty of money out there, we just have to go after it.
What is, what's going on with our Brownfield redevelopment authority? Are they functional? I see that as a vacancy.
Yeah, I think, I think really and truly, I think it's only met once in the last year or so. Right now, they're currently earning, you know, projects that are being brought before, and it's kind of a similar thing, where whatever's being captured is, you know, I know there's only one or two, you know, projects that are actively involved with the Brownfield redevelopment, but essentially, right now, it's all but effectively dormant, just due to a lack of activity.
Oh, okay. The reason I asked that question, because I noticed that there was a vacancy, and if that vacancy is still available, I wouldn't mind serving.
Okay. Yeah, I know Mayor Pro Tim serves on that as well as myself, and it's only, yeah, it's only been one meeting in quite some time.
You want somebody to nominate you?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, since it's a vacancy, I would be interested in, since I'm familiar with it.
Let him nominate himself.
Nominate yourself.
Nominate yourself.
You have any records on files?
I nominate myself.
I want to see his resume. Okay, he nominated himself. Any support? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes.
May I ask if we can continue this little discussion? I've got a couple of other commissions.
Sure.
The Cable Television Commission has, to my knowledge, has not been functioning. I understand the chair stepped down, the vice chair determined that she would not step in, and I've been waiting for a long time to have a meeting, because I have ideas. Who's going to call this meeting?
You're on this board?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm listening. Call it.
They should be meeting regularly, shouldn't they?
Well, they're supposed to be, but I have never been informed as to a meeting. I've asked a few times, and no one can tell me.
Which one is that?
Supposed to meet the second Tuesday of each month at 6:00 at the Rex Center. This is the cable television for me.
That's definitely wrong. We meet the fourth Tuesday of every month at 5:00 here, in the back room over there.
But you haven't been meeting?
Things have come on that same day, you know, other things that we've had to do, but we should be having a meeting this month. And then when we do show up, it's like two of us do, no one else.
Well, you can still let things down, but.
Not officially.
Not officially, but you can still sit and talk. The third one is the Inster Historical Commission. I don't know how many of you are really aware of the fact that there are a lot of historical edifices in this community that need to be marked. There are homes still standing that were built by Henry Ford, old man Henry Ford, and those need to be researched and marked as historic places. So currently, there are three people who are officially still on the Historical Commission. Everyone else's tenures have expired. So please consider the Inster Historical Commission. Even on Michigan Avenue, there are historical buildings. So we need to make certain that we are keeping up with that information and making sure that things get marked, so that they're not destroyed, because our history will be gone. Thank you. I'm done with the commissions.
Okay. Any other nominations? All right. I see a representative from Senator Betty Jean Alexander's office. Do you have any updates for us? Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, I'll be real quick, because I'm dropping stuff. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and Honorable City Council Members, Southman and Clerk as well, and of course, the citizens of Inster. I am Lisa Hicks Clayton. I'm a Dearborn High City Council Member, a neighbor of yours, but I'm the community liaison for Senator Betty Jean Alexander's office. Senator sends her best regards to all of you, and of course, wishes you the very best holiday, Happy Independence Day, and of course, you have your festival coming up this weekend. We wish you the very best with that. But the Senator wanted to let you know that she is working on securing, and when you talk about historical landmarks, she is working on securing from the state funds to support your Malcolm X House. So that is in the works. And then the other thing I wanted to share, some of you may have received this via email. If not, I brought copies, it's updates from the Senator regarding bills in Lansing, so I do have copies with me this evening, and it's nice to join you tonight. So thank you for giving me a moment to share. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. State Representative Joel Jones, good to see you back. Nice socks, too.
Just do it. Hey, council, mayor, administration, citizens, I am happy to be back. I just got back late Friday night from my annual training exercise with the National Guard, so got a chance to get a tan, grow out the beard a little bit. So tonight, really, we are temporarily on a break, so the budget isn't in conference right now, so I just have some general announcements. First and foremost, we have some staffing rearrangements, and so for those of you may know, Javion Johnson, who was my chief of staff, I'm pressing buttons, he was my chief of staff, just got him a position with the county, and so he's going to be going to Wayne County starting in August. In the meantime, he'll be taking over the nonprofit we had started last year called the Neighborhood Hope Dealers. So Javion will still be around, but not exactly in the office. But the person will be coming in to work with myself and Preston and the rest of the team. We have our honorable Councilman Stephen Chisholm, he's going to be joining the team, and so look out for that. But besides that, I'm just happy to be back, happy to see everyone, looking forward to the Music Fest. I've been hearing a lot of good things about Inster. Unfortunately, we had those incidents this past weekend, but I'm looking forward to doing some great things and working with the Senator, get that historic house together, but yeah, I'm just happy to be here. Happy Tuesday. Happy Monday. Yeah, that's it. Anyone have any questions or comments? Wonderful. Peace, family.
Good to see you. Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. Everybody's in the house today.
Thank you, God. Yeah, you got a full representation tonight. Council members and mayor, I placed at your seat, I think when you recessed for a few minutes, a completed study of the Wayne County Transportation Assets, just for you to review if you're leisure, if you're really getting, you can't get to sleep at night, you can open one of those up. But anyway, it's some good information. It's a basis point of where we stand right now, which, as everyone knows, those at home, and many of you that have contacted me about problems with county roads, it's a basis, it's a starting point, like I said, to tell us where we're at right now. Our next step will be putting together Asset Management Plan. That'll be coming along, hopefully, within the next four to six months. The, would tell you too, I guess I can skip down to one of the things that we, I'll tell you in a few minutes about the roads. At the June 6th full commission meeting, we passed the following items. We approved a mutual aid agreement with the Wayne County Sheriff's Office and the Inster Police Department, as well as many other Western Wayne police departments, a mutual aid program that, I believe it's been in effect for some time, but we approved it, so there can be mutual response on emergencies and when there's a need for extra help. We also approved a contract with the Neighborhood Defender Service. That's a new indigent legal defense services for the, in the Third Circuit Court, for criminal cases, for felony cases, where the defendant cannot provide for their own legal defense. And there were, there had been some complaints about the degree of representation, and this should improve that a great deal. There's going to be additional attorneys that'll be available, as well as, hopefully, they are able to provide representation, as I said, that in the past, there were some complaints that we'd received. There was also a, I attended on the roads issue, that contract, let me back up, that contract with the Legal Defense Service is almost $8 million. That'll be over a period of time, and it's going to be a big push, because the state is pushing all the counties across the state to improve their services, to indigent care. But I wanted to mention that we had a federal aid committee meeting on June 27th, where they gave final approval to some road projects. It was held at the Westland City Hall, and representatives from most of the communities were there, but if you hadn't heard already, Inster, for next year, will be getting $2.3 million for the replacement of Middle Belt Road. And so that'll take it from Michigan Avenue up to Cherry Hill. That whole stretch should be repaired, and probably, I expect it's going to be a mill and replace, so it should be a big improvement. I know anyone that's driven that road needs it, in serious need of repair. And the, it may, part of the project may continue over into '21, but it's going to be over the 2021, two construction seasons. And I was asked before I, before she left, Pastor Overman had asked me to, she had to leave, she was not feeling well, I think she had a fever, actually, but she asked me if I would make an announcement for her, and I said gladly I would, and she wanted to mention that for girls, 5th through 12th grade, Camp Inspire is calling you. Please register online at operationrefuge.org. Operation, www-operationrefuge.org. And that's from Pastor Jean. And unless anyone has any questions, that's it on my report.
I do have just one question. Yeah, reference the Middle Belt project. This is just the roads. There's no infrastructure repairing going on at that time.
And what do you mean exactly? Sidewalks or?
No, no, like underneath, where these pipes are bursting and eroding the roads.
They will do whatever's necessary. If they take the road up, you know, they'll see that, I'm assuming, it does, did not indicate, it was 2.3, over $2.3 million, and it did not indicate the extent of the work. But they usually will make sure the pipes and all the water system underneath, anything, the drainage system is in place, that it's right.
Okay, well, we're going to put Jerome in.
Please do, please do. We'll put him to work too, if you'd like to. But I did want to, Senator, I know this is dangerous, getting up and, when it's televised, to even mention this, but I'd like to help you with their project, with the young people. I was touched by your, what ICANN is doing.
Oh, okay.
And I'll be getting in touch with you, I'll at least give you a hundred dollars towards it.
Great, we want everybody to know.
All right, thank you.
That's our future.
All right, absolutely.
I'm sorry. Typically not, but you got something quick?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if we had any set aside for minority companies, particularly in construction. I know with Wayne County, the jail, they've had 30%. And with $2.3 million coming to Inster, it's important for me to know that there is some type of set aside for some of those monies to go to minorities and homeowners.
I think this contract is a, it's a federal contract. I believe there's a stipulation in there, that there has to be. If you'd like to give us a call, or send me an email at the office, we'll research it and make sure that that's the case. Okay? Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Oh, I'm sorry, second reading.
Councils to offer a second reading and approval on Amendment Z19-03 to the city's zoning map, to rezone one parcel, Lot 767 through 770, located at the southwest corner of Princeton and Princeton Streets, from R1C1 Family Residential Zoning to M1 Light Industrial Zoning.
You have a motion?
This is where we asked that it be enclosed.
Your precision, yeah.
Yeah, so all of that stuff stacked there?
Yes.
All right, so it looks decent.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Support.
And properly move and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. New business.
Consideration and approval for a special event for the Commission on Aging, annual picnic from 11:30 a.m. until 2:30 p.m., August 2nd, 2019, at Wheatley Park on Penn and Beach Daley.
Support. And probably move and support it twice, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes.
Item B is consideration and approval of an offer to purchase two commercial lots, which are located on the north side of Michigan Ave, and Inster Road, and John Daley Road, and are legally described, as duly noted, in the amount of $21,000, to HWRS JT LLC, Ronald Shunaya?
Shuna.
Shuna.
Support.
And properly move and support it, discussion.
What do those initials mean?
Harvey Weiss, Ronald Shuna, and someone else with a JT. A lot of initials, a lot of initials. Did you find out any additional information? Oh, yeah, come on up to the mic, yeah. Rodeo Queen, come on up.
Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
He said the first thing that they would do would tear down the existing building, because it's in poor condition, and then they would seek out either a single retailer or multiple retailers. They do what they're. Um, they do, um, what they're leaning towards is a retail bank or some type of food service or retail.
Anybody have any questions?
I'm curious, but what's the location exactly?
Old, old sports tavern, right?
And they, yes, that's correct. They've already, uh, purchased the parking lot and the land west of the, uh, location, so they just wanna get that building and have additional space.
Yeah, okay.
And they would like to obtain the rest of the building when possible.
Okay. We got a motion? Oh, we already did that. You already called a question? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes, thank you, Peggy.
Item C is a budget amendment number two to the general fund, the major streets, local streets, parks, rubbish, court building, water and sewer funds.
Some move.
Can properly move and support it, discussion?
Well, we just got it today, and I still have some other questions, uh, like, like N S P, we don't have an amount down there. I thought just with this preliminary that we was gonna just go through today?
Well, um, if there's no amount, there's, there's nothing, like, N S P, there's, there's no change from what would have been already approved. As I mentioned earlier, a, a large number of these are things that have already been approved by council, we're just trying to, to get them, um, uh, into the budget under one document, because, like, for instance, we voted on a number of different contracts, so for purposes of accounting and the like, and then also we wanna, uh, make sure that these are adopted, um, that they can be put into the, um, uh, last fiscal year, the fiscal year they just ended yesterday, and, uh, so that they can be included. So that's, that was the purpose of, uh, it's not bringing any new expenditures or new, um, you know, new proposals, that we simply were just capturing everything that had already been done, or things that had, had already been expensed. So, um, we didn't wanna submit any, any new information that had not, that had already been presented to council. This is just trying to capture everything into a single, single document, and then also to provide an update on the, uh, general fund balance was the purpose of it.
Okay, I was just trying to just, um, equate that with the, um, with the county chargeback, to see how those. I was just trying to equate that to see how, uh, how that, uh, go along with our county chargebacks.
Yeah, and so the, the county chargebacks we get, get that, we literally got that check on Friday.
Yeah.
Um, but it takes some time to, to calculate all of the final distribution, so just based on the amount that we got from the county on Friday, uh, we just tried to do a quick, over the weekend, just do a quick run of some numbers, but it, it's a pretty detailed process that the accountants have to go through to calculate exactly, um, what was received, 'cause you, you, keep in mind, we're receiving tax, uh, payments, uh, for multiple years, so it's a, it's a somewhat of a cumbersome process that takes time, and, um, we just wanted to, just kinda, again, give an update based on, uh, us having received that check and having a preliminary number at this point.
Well, it's good to receive a check, then rather than can't win, I would change.
All right, any other discussion? Although, oh, no, 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 we don't. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Item D is consideration and approval of an offer to convey two structures, four five zero zero Inkster Road, located on the west side of Inkster Road, between Lehigh Street and Annapolis Ave, as duly no- noted, and four three six zero Hickory Street, to the Inkster Housing Commission, I mean, I'm sorry, is it to?
Inkster Housing Commission.
Okay, to the Inkster Housing Commission.
Do we have a motion? Some move? Or support?
We're supposed to take something out.
We took the three out.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay.
So it's been properly moved and, and second, and any additional discussion?
Yes. I am still concerned about this situation, and having received this, I'm, I'm real skeptical about receiving information, and, and it's being expected to digest it and understand it at the last minute. So, this whole situation has bothered me from the beginning, and nothing has been said here to change that. You know, I understand what you're saying about, we're gonna get stuck with the bill, we're gonna get this, we're gonna get that, but still, I want a clear understanding, for our vote yes on something.
I don't wanna confuse you, with the recovery agreement, it's just something, uh, Mayor Pro Temp asked for at the last meeting, has nothing to do with this transaction, so that's just the recovery agreement they entered into in summer of two thousand and eighteen, just for general information purposes.
And that's fine, it's just like, like I said, last minute stuff makes me wary.
But it doesn't affect what we're talking about, they came to us and, and they gave a pretty long, lengthy presentation, we asked them all type of stuff, so I just don't want you to think that that has something to do with this, I just wanted to comply with the request and get you the information.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other discussion?
Um, I just, just for clarity, um, they're talking about the, the property on, uh, forty-three ten Middle Belt, uh, to be excluded from this deal.
Yes, it's, it's not part of the motion at all. It's gonna be part of, that's gonna be our office for Parks and Rec at Lamone Park. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Passes. Public participation. Lucy Byrd, Seventh Day Adventist Church.
Good afternoon, Mayor and the Inkster City Council. My name is Lucy Byrd, I'm from the Sharon Seventh Day Adventist Church, and I wanna thank you all for giving us, giving me the opportunity to announce our second annual health fair. We're gonna have a seventeen-table health fair in August, and I'd like to review, uh, just a few of the tables, because our mission is community service and a healthy lifestyle, and that's what we're trying to demonstrate in our health fair. We have, um, London Seventh Day Adventist Church, uh, health fair from maybe Michigan, they, uh, deal with the whole family, uh, by using miniature body parts from the self, uh, from the science fair to tell you how to take care of your body from head to toe. We, um, we have, uh, free, um, health streaming provided by Beaumont, and we have the, um, Cancer Society that's gonna do, uh, free cancer testing, we have the University of Michigan that's gonna come, and they, you can even come and talk to them about signing up, uh, for some all-timers, um, seminars in your church. We have, um, Inkster Vikings, uh, uh, they are also gonna have a table. We have Beaumont, um, team, and I like to think of our health fair as an intervention, as a family intervention, so that when something happens, you have the necessary resources. Our health fair is going to be August eighteen, twenty nineteen, from twelve to four p.m. It's Adventist Community Services, Community, uh, Adventist Community Service is an outreach program for the Sharon Seventh Day Adventist Church. It's gonna be, uh, conducted at the American International Academy, located at two eight nine five five Rosewood Street, Inkster, Michigan, and we're going to be giving out book bags, school supplies, and we will also be providing vegan lunches and water for the people that attend. Thank you so much for allowing me to announce our program, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
When, when is it?
Excuse me, what time is it?
When is it? You said August.
It's August the eighteen, uh, twenty nineteen, from twelve p.m. to four p.m. And I have some flyers, is it okay if I pass them out?
You can give them to the clerk, she'll pass them out.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Byrd. Monia Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council, my name is Monae Thomas, and I am here to represent the citizens on Gertrude Court in Inkster. Um, we've been having a problem where Middle Belt Baptists have put a, what we call a pole barn on their property. They raised it up, so every time it rains, there is extensive amount of water that runs off into the yards that are adjacent right behind Middle Belt Baptist Church. I have spoken to the mayor, he's been trying to get in touch with the pastor for over three weeks now, it's actually been four weeks. Um, I've spoken to two of the representatives, they said that city council approved their, um, permits for them to build on this land, but what they're not realizing is that there's no runoffs, meaning that there's nothing to where the rain will run off to. If you jump into my mother, which is here today, if you look in her backyard and everybody's backyards that's adjacent to that, uh, Middle Belt Baptist, nobody in their backyards can sit, there is extensive, uh, weeds that are actually, I'm five, five and a half, and it's taller than me. They will not cut their backyards because there's so much water back there. We've been putting bleach to keep down the mosquitoes, the grass in the backyard is prettier than the grass in the front yard. But my mother has a gazebo back there that was given to her by my stepfather, which is no about, longer, no longer here, and it is now tilting because there is so much water. Back in the day, when we used to hop the fence, you could not do that with hers, because if any child jumps that fence, they're good as dead, because it's like a swamp. There's ducks back there, there are snakes that are back there, we've been asking for help, and as of this point, the neighbors of Gertrude Court are done. They want city council, they would like the mayor to do something about it. My mother is up in age, I'm not gonna discuss her age, 'cause she's sitting here. But, at that age, you want to enjoy your backyard, you would like to sit there and play with your grandkids and your great-grandkids. She can do none of that, none of the residents can do that. I would like to know what can be done at this point, because right now, the citizens of Gertrude Court are now going to just start discussing a, uh, an attorney, because this cannot go on, if it rains the rest of this week, there's no way that you're gonna put anybody in their backyards. So, at this point, I'm not just asking, I'm begging that city council get involved, because Middle Belt Baptist is blaming you guys, and then point fingers or pointing back at them because they said you guys approved it. They have the permits that was approved by city council.
Well, no, city council doesn't approve building permits, it was the building department probably. And irregardless whether we approve the permit, it does not matter, they cannot have water running from their property to someone else's property damaging your property, they can't do that. So, what we can do is send code enforcement, we were trying to do it by phone call, because I know Pastor Johnson, I figured, he didn't respond. Um, so that didn't work. All right, DPS Bud Avery, when he was working for us, went over it, did check it out, saw what the problem was, he was gonna give some suggestions to the church of how they could fix it, but they didn't respond. So now, we're at the point where we'd have to send code enforcement over there and issue a citation. I mean, there's nothing else we can do but issue, I was trying to avoid that, 'cause it's a church, but all we can do is issue a citation at this point.
But at this point, their backyards are destroyed.
Oh, yeah.
My mother has water in her garage, she's bought lawn mowers, equipment that belonged to my father is now destroyed in their yards, the people, their garages have, uh, the boards coming off of them because of the water, the water's been standing for so long. Now, we're about to have another week of rain. What am I supposed to do, I am her caregiver. I can't do anything in my mother's backyard, I can't cut the grass, so people been coming over here, saying, oh, well, she needs to cut the grass. Nobody will come in there, they've already told her, and the people on that block, they will not come in that backyard and cut their grass to destroy their, their equipment.
Any damage done is a civil matter by whoever caused the damage. But on, on the city's end, we're gonna do what we're supposed to do, uh, but the, the church has to fix this, church has to fix it.
So, if we're not getting in touch with the pastor, then what is our?
I'm just sending code for it, I mean, that's, that's, I tried, I mean, that's, that's all I can do. Um, I'm gonna, I'll call again in the morning, but I'm sending code enforcement over there, and they usually write a letter and say, this is what's wrong, you have seven days to remediate, remedy, uh, remedy it, which will give them some time to take action before we issue a citation, 'cause a citation means you have to go to court.
Okay, well, at this point, I'm given thirty days.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and City Clerk, I'm not here for the good fellas today.
How much, Barbara?
Thousands. I'm here as a concerned citizen for Lamone Garden and Denby. I had to go over there Friday, and I was really upset at the deplorable condition that Lamone Garden looked, and then I wound up on Denby on, yesterday, and they were looking the same. I understand about the water, the rain and all that, but this is just ugly before the rain and all that, uh, the grass cutting, I don't know what services is used to cut the grass, is it a grass cutting service or is it a landscaping service? Because weeds are taller than me that are growing into trees, so that means that the company is not doing what they're supposed to do to manicure that area. And I am a product of Lamone Garden. I'm here to say I was the first baby in Lamone Garden, little history. My family was the first family to move into Lamone Garden, they were the host family, that's forty-one seventy-six Burton Street.
Where you was at?
Nineteen fifty-eight was the, uh, christening of the building. Nineteen fifty-nine is when my family moved in, January, they were the first family, it was blessed and everything. But to go and look at how it looks now, that just hurt my heart, it's just deplorable to me. And we use the word project, but that's not what it was. It was a multi-million dollar project, and we just took the word project to make it mean negative, and it was not. The people who used to live there were happy to be there, coming from, those that don't know, Cardboard City, which was the first Lamone Garden. Some more history, and if you go up to Jackson, Michigan, you will see a replica of Lamone Garden. Everyone across the country was coming to the city of Inkster to see Lamone Garden, 'cause it was a state of the art at that time, and it needs to continue to be that, and we need, I'm just saying, just because you're in the projects, you don't have to stay in it, but you don't have to live like that. And that's my concern, I don't know if I need to be on a board or something to do that, I, I certainly will.
Did you just volunteer?
Hey, I, I'll volunteer, 'cause I, I'm really upset about how it's looking over there. And when I grew up, the lawn mowers were at the building, and everybody went and got their lawnmower and flowers and cut the grass and all of that, and those yards were immaculate, and my grandmother had rose bushes, flowers and everything, and the night we moved out, my mother was coming back the next day, somebody had came and dug up all my grandmother's flowers, and the people across the street took all her bushes. But, I'm just saying, it, something needs to be done, it, it doesn't have to look like that in either one of the sites. That's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you.
Aren't they, aren't, isn't housing responsible for cutting that grass over there?
Yeah, that's why we need to get code enforcement over there, get.
We need to get the services provided, because we're going out of world backwards if we keep smashing housing with fire. Because we're going out of world backwards if we keep smashing housing with five hour tickets. They need to provide those services.
This is the conversation that Ricky Winstance says that we need to have with housing commissioners. So we can get some between the cities, then we can get an understanding on what needs to be done.
We can set up a joint meeting. Notice it up. Linton X. I don't think so. Did Linton X leave? Linton X? Okay. Officer Lebo.
At six thirty. It's at the forty-five hundred. Good evening, everybody. All right, so just a few announcements. Just want to let you guys know that our next movie night at the police department is going to be Friday, July nineteenth, starting at nine P M. Come on out and watch A Secret Life of Pets. Enjoy free popcorn, snow cones, hot dogs and other refreshments. Citizens of all ages are welcome. Please bring a chair blanket to sit on. The chairs we have do fill up fast. And also, we are still looking for organizations as well as volunteers for the National Night Out event. That is Tuesday, August sixth, from five to nine P M. in the Inkster Police Department parking lot. We have about twenty-seven organizations signed up right now to host booths at the event. These booths are completely free. We are looking to help local entrepreneurs and organizations get name recognition out there and spread resources and information for our citizens. We're going to have live entertainment, DJ, face painting, rock climbing wall, basketball courts, video game trucks, bounce houses, food. It's a completely free night. I understand that it is on the night of the election. However, it's a national night out. It's done across all fifty states. So go vote and then come have a good time. The night is completely free for our citizens. May have already said that, sorry. So if you are an organization that would like to have a free booth at the event, you can reach out to myself, Officer Lebo, at three one three four hundred five three eight seven. We are also looking for some volunteers to help just run the concession stand and do some stuff that this preggo lady cannot do. So reach out to me there. And we'll happily take high school students that need their sheet signed or need hours in. Anybody that needs some time or you got a bored teenager at home, send them my way. Thank you all.
Linton X.
Greetings. I want to first say that it's a pessimist message in the Holy Quran and say, do not hide the truth, nor mix the truth while you know. Where there is injustice, our people cry out to see or receive balance where injustice has reigned supreme. So in their cry, they seek for some type of resolution or some type of resolve. But yet this past week, it's a woman that got killed over here on Cherry Hill in Inkster and her child. Orita and her son was erring or something towards that nature. Recently this year, a young man got killed because he was just sitting in his house, in his home. And bullets ricocheted through the house. You have other killings that took place this year, senseless murder that's occurring. Now, our presence, I'm in a nation of Islam. So our presence are out here just to restore peace in the community. And when I say restore peace and why I spoke on mixing truth with falsehood, because when the findings come out of this whole reality of what occurred, our people don't want to see nothing mixed with no falsehood mixed with truth. They want to know the whole truth of the reality. And if anybody going to get penalized for any injustice done, if any injustice was done. It's a habit that, it's a continual pattern to where there's no balance when the findings come out. So people still be feeling there's injustice. And then that injustice, it sets a mindset to keep the environment unstable. So we living in a community that's unstable. So all we want to do is get the men's together. If we can get together and get a group of men together, young boys, young teenagers, and let us dialogue with them. To see where is it at, meet them on the same level that they are at. Even the police is because some of them is corrupt. So if they are corrupt, then what is we doing? Placating them while they're in insanity. So if it's going to be any justice in anything, it got to go on the same level. Even when you're dealing with teenagers that's causing all this senseless murder, it's got to occur with the staffs too. So all I'm saying, we out here just to try to restore peace. That's all I'm saying, because it got to stop.
Thank you. Robert Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. Here on behalf of the Habitat for Humanity Western Wayne County, where we service eighteen going on twenty-four cities. Inkster is one of them. I'm the operations director. I'm the direct assistant to the executive director and the executive board there. I'm here to talk about an issue that we had on Dunning Street. And I think, Mayor, you may have some knowledge of it. And if you want to speak up or just correct me on what's going on. We had a situation where we purchased property. As you know, we create affordable housing here in the Western Wayne County areas. And Inkster is one of the places where we would like to continue to create affordable housings. But some of the issues that we've come up with is that when we got some of our properties, the properties were deeded to us with the wrong partial number. And so what happened is we had the correct, excuse me, we had the correct addresses, but the partial numbers weren't matched properly with the addresses that we received. Effectively, we built seven houses on those community in that area. And so now, as we go back to foreclosing, one of our members who have gone through a mortgage with us, we have learned that the deed is not correct. Indeed, the partial, the parcels that we were sold by the city and then subsequently the ones that we received from Wayne County did not have the appropriate partial numbers associated with the addresses. Well, as we go forward, now we're in a situation where we're asking the city to rectify that situation. And so, you know, I think it's a situation where behind closed doors, if the council say that that's something we should talk about so that the normal citizens are not involved in the situation. But I just wanted, I have to come to you guys because, you know, if we go to the mayor privately, he's like, hey, he has to wash his hands of it because he wants the whole, you know, everybody to know. But at the same time, we don't want to, you know, meander and not have a decision on it because our operating budget relies on making sure that we get people in a home and they're paying their taxes here in Inkster. They're paying their mortgage to the fund mortgage company that we are part owner in and making sure that we keep this cycle that is self-sustainable going. And so a part of having, you know, seven or eight houses, almost a million dollars worth of housing in the city of Inkster, we're just trying to make sure that we can rectify this situation. And just want to make sure that the city of Inkster is on board with that rectification. And also to just make it known that we want to make this issue straight. Also, there was a partial that we were forced to let go because there was no resolution immediately. Because as you all know, we work with a budget like you guys do. And so the thought is, can we receive that back? And then also, there is a charitable fund that says that now in Michigan, that we were not even supposed to be paying taxes on that amount.
Mr. Johnson, your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Just real quick, just so everybody knows, the first situation you spoke of has been resolved. Ms. Dent reached out to me several months ago and said, hey, the deeds were incorrect. These deeds were done by our former city attorney years ago, before we were in office. He said, look, if it's a mistake, we'll correct it. No problem. In the midst of that, you sued us, which is fine. That's your right to sue us. And our response was, we'll fix it, no problem, which we did. The lawsuit is over. The court entered a judgment giving you a hundred percent interest in all the properties that the deeds were incorrect on. So that issue is behind us. That's been filed by our city attorney. It's done. So I'm not sure if they told you that when they sent you down tonight, but there is no longer an issue with respect to that.
As long as it's on record as being so, I'm good with it.
Oh, it's done, it's done.
Then also, if I can just talk to the attorney so that I can have that paperwork that matches.
Your organization has the paperwork. Your attorney, you have attorneys, they have a copy of it. I emailed Ms. Dent a copy of it. But we'll certainly get, you give us your email.
So I'm the operations director and I'm the person who would have the information on my desk. So I don't have it on my desk. And so I think that's why. So if the executive director has it, then, you know, that's something.
And your attorneys. I mean, they handled hope. She's been calling me direct. Your attorneys handled the lawsuit. They dealt with my attorney. I mean, the information should be, they should give you.
So I'm not here to question the mayor's integrity.
No, no, it's not that. I'm not even taking it that way.
Just simply.
We'll email it to you, there's no problem. We'll give it to you, there's no problem. The only issue left now is the issue of taxes. And so that's, you know, we received the email from Ms. Dent today. You know, however it's handled, it's handled. I mean, essentially it was a threat to sue us, which is fine. That's why we took off the one item being deeded back to you off of the agenda, to wait and see what happens. If you sue us, that's fine. I mean, it's not fine, but it is what it is.
So the, in essence of suit, and Madam Clerk, may I continue to ask because he did make a suggestion? I'm just responding to his remarks. So just in response, the suit had more to do with due diligence. So we have individuals who we report to, both nationally, internationally. And so when we let matters be undone, it says that we're not doing our due diligence on what we're supposed to do to go forward to make sure that we're creating the affordable housing for those. So our intention is not to take from the people who we're trying to help. And I'm a citizen of Inkster also.
Okay, good.
So I just want that to be known. But the other piece is, we just want to make sure that we're in a position where if you're going to deep back the land, I'm sure, and I can speak for it because I'm a part of the executive team, that it's not our intention to do any of those, to do the city harm. Long term. But then the other thing is, we're looking to do some building here to create a training facility in the Western Wayne County. And we would like to use Inkster as the place to do the, to use the training ground. And we know that, oh, I think it's Bayham and Dunning, that there may be new commercial property that's available. And I'm not sure if she mentioned it to you, but I was excited when I found out and I did mention it to her. And so, you know, I try not to get into the executive and the mayor's business, but at the same time, you know, if it comes across my desk, I want to make sure that I'm being prudent on what's put on my shoulders. That's all.
I'd be happy to send you the email she sent today, so you'll be aware. I don't think you and her discussed this email.
And I think that sometimes when we talk in an international version, from the international level and from the national area, that you come with the person who's more diplomatic and have the understanding of what the real issue is opposed to the executive director who is just a person who is in charge of the, you know, eighteen to twenty-four cities is a lot.
It's a lot, yeah.
And so, you know, dealing with these situations, we want to make sure that we're pinpoint on. So I want to make sure that you know, as a citizen and as a person who actually that information comes across my desk, I wouldn't be an advocate for that direction, more so than just making sure that we solve it so that this issue can be resolved immediately. Because it's just a part of the fiscal issue. And we want to make sure that in sustainability, we keep that piece alive. And we're anxious to begin building back here in Inkster.
Well, I appreciate you coming here tonight.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
You might not understand that your attorneys have the same paperwork that David has. And shouldn't they be the ones forwarding it to him?
Yeah, but we'll send it to him, you know, just to be court, civil.
You might be civilized when people sue.
Reverend George Williams.
Good day, Mr. Mayor, Council. I just come, I was enjoying, I just come to thank all of the brothers who came out yesterday to the board of men luncheon. We had a gorgeous, gorgeous time. We want to thank the mayor for his support, the mayor pro tem, Councilman Chisholm, Jill Jones, the C I D, our attorney who helped. I appreciate all those and hope I didn't miss nobody that came out and supported because we had a packed house and the speaker was great. And you missed a treat. He talked about raising your expectations. And I want to leave that. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk.
Those residents who have submitted for an A V application, your ballots were mailed out today. If you are interested in receiving an A V ballot, please contact the city clerk's office at three one three five six three nine seven seven zero. Thank you.
Mr. Trezor.
Just want to let the residents know that tax bills are being mailed this weekend for the summer tax season. I'm not quite sure how I should take that. I'm not quite sure about that. But those tax bills are being mailed. They, we can start accepting payment as of today, July first. Information is available on the city's website if you want to look it up online. Keep in mind, you can pay in person at City Hall by cash, check or credit card. There's a three percent charge for any credit card payments that go to the credit card companies for processing the payments. You can also mail in a payment by check. And we have a drop box outside of City Hall if you come when we're closed during our off hours. So if you don't receive, give it about a week or so if you haven't received a bill, then please let us know here at City Hall.
All right, thank you. What does Councilwoman Howard do? Okay, Councilman Chisholm.
Good evening. Excuse me. I just, I realized the microphone wasn't in front of me. I did speak with a resident earlier who voiced some concerns. And we did kind of, I just kind of alerted those who I ran into. I believe he called everyone on council. Some of those questions did get answered tonight with regards to TIFAs, the bonds that we have to pay, purchasing of property on Michigan Avenue. So I'm glad those got brought up. It's just a coincidence. And then also with regards to housing, a commissioner did take me through a property one evening and just kind of showed me what was going on over there. I spoke with different commissioners. It was supposed to be a priority and getting it looked into. So I'm hope that's the case because unfortunately, that is a not so pleasant situation or living conditions. And other than that, just hope you all are getting ready to get your bikes out. I rode by myself last week. I rode, I rode, I rode two miles in twenty minutes. And I didn't have nobody to give me mouth to mouth resuscitation. I couldn't hardly make it back home. So y'all look out for your fellow councilmen as I get back in shape. And I'm going to look out for you as well as you join me. I think though, last week, it was the heat. Somebody asked me, why didn't I cancel it? And I said, I still needed to exercise myself. But everybody kind of in the back of their mind said, yes, Steve's not going out tonight, but I still get out, I still got out there. So I just want to say, get your bikes ready. Hopefully Wednesday, seven P M., Ink Town Pedal Push, meet in Inkster Park in between Michigan Avenue and John Daly, starting at the bike path and going on from there. And our county commissioner left, but I'm going to have to, I guess, ask him and/or maybe Jerome or if he may know. I guess because they've been driving heavy vehicles on the bike path and it's just a blacktop. There's nothing under it to really support. It's crumbling bad. And I didn't know if that was, I don't think there's going to be something on our end, but maybe that's something on the county's end.
It's on our end. We're required to maintain it. That's part of the contract.
And I don't even know how to stop or how we do that because when there's picnics and things of that nature down there and people are taking equipment to different areas, they drive their vehicles back there and...
That path is rated to support a fire truck and rescue. It has to go down there.
It's just the edges though. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
So sad you were out there by yourself last week, just you and your spandex.
And enjoying, no, I was enjoying Inkster. Enjoying Inkster.
Don't let it make you ashamed of your spandex.
I'm going to yield to Councilwoman Howard. It was her turn for communication.
Only thing that I have to say is I wish everyone to have a safe holiday this week. I'm just coming up fourth and have fun at the summer fest and see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wiley.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to let all the citizens know that I will be having an advisory meeting, advisory board meeting, the fourth Thursday of this month. It'll be at five P M. and it'll be here in council chambers. That's an advisory board meeting. It says District Three. It says District Three, but everyone is welcome. And that's at five o'clock, the fourth Thursday, which is the twenty-fifth. And directly following that meeting, I will have an I Can meeting. All you people who have let your memberships last are encouraged to attend this meeting and renew them because we are a materialistic and monetary society and we can't move things forward without money. Okay? Twenty dollars a year. And you can come and listen to all the benefits you get from being an I Can member. And you heard the commissioner say he's joining, so we wanna see you there too. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Are you asleep? Are you ready to go, huh? Uh, first of all, I see Peggy Bishop in the audience and I just wanted to tell you that I went to Bishop Autorecking a few weeks ago and I said, I need twenty tires for our garden so we have something to bring in the garden. The next thing I know, there are twenty tires stacked in front of my house. And the kids painted the tires and they had a ball. So I wanna invite you all to come by and we're gonna take pictures. But they, it looks really pretty. It's very, very pretty. So thank you very much for that. Um, you may have seen a flyer about, uh, the Inkster counts since its two, twenty twenty. We have a complete count committee that is getting ready to get started on our project of getting everyone, man, woman, and child in this city counted. Uh, we have learned that in the last census, Inkster was grossly undercounted because we did not get to everyone that lives in this city. We get money based on the number of people that are counted. So if we want to, uh, kinda feather our nets with some federal and state dollars, we need to really get out and help with this, uh, project. So I'm asking anyone that wants to, uh, participate on the complete count committee to fill this out, scan, photograph it, scan it, send it back to me. My email address is on here. My, uh, phone number is on here too. You see the, the members of the committee that we have in place right now? We just need citizens to work with us. There's a form at the bottom. You can fill it out and give it to the city clerk if you'd like. But please consider being a part of this. It's going to be a huge effort that is gonna be very, very, very important for the city of Inkster. And the second thing is, you may have heard, um, uh, Jason Dixon come to us in a presentation here at city council about being a smart city. Uh, we are a, uh, one of the deserts that we have is, uh, Wi-Fi, internet technology. And we are working on a plan to become a smart city by placing kiosks around the city that will provide free internet. But we want to have the citizens to help us plan where to put them. We don't wanna just put them up. We want you to help us know where you need to have them. When you have a smart city and it brings, these kiosks will begin to ring the city, that means that people that don't have access to internet may be able to get access to internet either by being close to a kiosk or actually being near the kiosk. So this is going to take place as a town hall meeting on Wednesday, July seventeenth at six o'clock P M. at the Dozer Recreation Center. Please come and bring people with you. This is very important. Uh, we're going to become a green city and I want Inkster to be a city that people are coming to see and to talk about. So please keep those two dates in mind. Well, keep that date in mind and then keep the, uh, complete count committee in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Oden.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, I, uh, I was listening to Ms. Cooper and the statement that she made about what's happening, what's going on, uh, in different sections of the city. And I, 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 I applaud her for that for the simple reason that when you look around what's happening, what's going on in the city of Inkster over the past years, it is our city. It is our community. And it is something that we all together has to take care of. It's not just on the hands or in the hands of the city council. It's the community in itself. Everybody has to be involved. Everybody has to do what they need to do to deal with the upkeep of this community. I have a concern with that. I think that's something we all need to deal with and do. I think that's something that will benefit this community. We need to have the interest of all the issues that's going on in this community in order to make this community better. I say that because it's real. I say this because it's true. And I say it because we all need to deal with it together. It's not just a few of us that's addressing what's happening, what's going on in this community besides this council and everybody in this community. It is our job together to make this community better. And the only way we're gonna do that is work together in doing so. And I say that from my heart because this community means a lot to me. We need to be better than what we are and we can be, but we got to do it together. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem.
Well, just wanna say, on July twenty-seventh, the Inkster Vikings All Class picnic is having their picnic on July twenty-seventh, uh, at Inkster Park. So all you Vikings out there, uh, we're looking for you to have on your Viking shirts and come on out and have a good time. Other than that, um, enjoy the Summer Fest this year. I hope you have a good time at the Summer Fest. Uh, patronize all the, all the food, uh, patrons out there, vendors, and continue to shop Inkster. Thank you.
Okay. All right, just real quick, I just want, uh, announcement, July fifth, this Friday, we will be closed because we will be getting our hair done and our outfit out for the Summer Fest. So do not come to City Hall on Friday. Um, but I'd like to see you Friday night at the Summer Fest. You're gonna be going from. Oh, yeah, we close the floor. We gonna be eating barbecue on the floor. All type of sauce on our fingers and stuff, so we not gonna be able to make it to work. Um, so we'd like to see y'all Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We got blues Friday night. It's gonna be a great show. Saturday, contemporary music with Denise Williams headlining, uh, Chico DeBarge, Bunny DeBarge. It's gonna be a great show. And then Sunday, Calante Gavin is gonna be headlining and a whole full day of gospel choirs, singers. It's gonna be a great, great time. So definitely wanna come out. Obviously, it's free, but we want you to spend your money with the vendors, uh, so they make some money and we have a good time. We're praying for good weather, so hopefully see everybody this weekend, just having a good time. That's all. Just have fun. You got something else, Al?
Yeah. Um, if anything, uh, same with the Summer Fest. We will be signing up kids for the summer camp at the Dozer. Uh, we will begin on the eighth. It's eighty dollars a kid, ages six to thirteen. Uh, we're gonna have fun, games, activities, financial literacy programs for, um, recreation just about. So if you have any questions or concerns, please you can come find me or you can contact, uh, the Dozer at any time. Uh, my cell phone is three one three four zero zero three five one eight. Thank you.
Forgot to tell you, three-on-three basketball tournament this weekend at the Summer Fest. It's the first time we doing that. So if you know any teenage kids who wanna, who love basketball, make sure they call Al back. You get the team together, three people, and let's, let's see them out there Saturday, Sunday. Friday too, right? We playing Friday. Yeah, give them the age group.
So we gonna have a middle school group, um, eleven to thirteen. No, eleven to fourteen and then, no, eleven to thirteen and fourteen to eighteen for the high school group. It's totally free. No charge.
She'll look and bow.
No twenty-year-olds. No, ma'am.
No, I can't do, I'm way beyond eighteen. We also gonna have. Stop, senior league. We also gonna have video trailers for the teenagers. We're gonna have face painting for the little kids. Uh, bouncy houses for, I guess, little and big kids. Everybody gets in those things, so it'll be three of those. So there're gonna be some cool bouncy houses. So make sure you get out and have a good time. Little family fun this weekend. That's all I have. Got motion to adjourn? Much for adjournment. It's been moved, supported. Need all those in favor? Right, you stop. I don't have any. You say you gonna stop.